Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Spitzer, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney? Mr. Davidson? Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here. Okay, our first item on the agenda tonight is approval of our April 11th, 2022 minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
I will abstain as I was not present at that meeting.
All yes with one extension. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. May I have a motion for approval of the April 25th, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
I need to abstain, I wasn't here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes with two extensions. Motion carries.
Thank you. We have four items of correspondence received, which are noted on the agenda, and with that we'll move right into the Student Council report. Jasmine?
Good evening, everyone. We had a lot of fun at Cabaret, which was on Friday, May 6th. It was a talent show with many amazing acts with some elements of comedy. The Student Council hosted Senior Central on Friday, May 13th. We were so delighted to finally be able to host this event after three years. All our seniors were wonderful in this parody pageant. Funds from this event go to the Drew Donahue Foundation to research ACC. Amir was crowned Senior Central 2022. Riga was voted as senior congeniality by his fellow contestants and Noah One's celebrity look-alike for his imitation of Dwayne the Rock Johnson. We've raised over $1,500 at this event. Also, students partook in AP testing through the first two weeks of May. Students are also preparing to take standardized tests. They started this week. Best of luck to all the students taking the exams. Upcoming events include the Buzz-a-thon, which will be taking place in the first week of June, and a Powerpuff football game on May 25th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Next, we're going to move on to the Superintendent's Report. Before I turn it over to Dr. Moore, I just want to acknowledge, I know there's a lot of you in the room tonight who have a lot of questions about the incident which took place last week. We're going to do our best to answer as much as we can tonight. Understand, this is a first step in our communications. The investigation is ongoing, and I would ask that you please pay close attention to Dr. Moore's presentation, as I think it will answer a lot of the questions that you may have tonight, and then we will have public session later on if there's any other questions or comments. But please take note, a lot of time and effort was put into this, and I think it will answer at least some of the questions that some of you folks have, as well as the board has had, but please be cognizant, this is the first step in communications to the public.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, and thank you, Jasmine, for your report tonight. Senior Central and Cabaret, wonderful things to welcome back this year, so I appreciate your reporting on those tonight and for everyone's support on those. I'm going to do the couple of items here, and then I'm going to step down to the podium and share a presentation on the screen with you. I've emailed it to all of you as a PDF, so you all on the board have the PDF that I'll be following tonight, so there's no need for you to step down from the stage if you're comfortable where you are. Couple of things on the agenda tonight. Before I do that, though, we have our Students of the Month from March and April. We have two months here to catch up on, so you can see that those groups are listed here for your notice, and congratulations. Again, this Student of the Month is always a wonderful conversation. Mr. Brant and I get to sit down with those students, with Mrs. Graham in my office, and chat with them about their experiences here. One of the things in the April conversation that was most notable is, we asked the students by a show of hands, and we tried to do it anonymously by asking them to close their eyes so they couldn't see each other, but by a show of hands, how many of them used their phones more than they'd like to, was the question that we asked them, and they all raised their hands, which was a pretty notable moment there with that group of students from the April Students of the Month. So those are ongoing, and we'll fill you in on the rest of those kids and the staff all-stars as we round out the June agendas. We have our HIB and suspension report on here, and before we get to any organizational items later, there is a motion here for the board on four HIBs that were reported in closed session last week. So at this point, I'm going to step down, and I'm just going to ask Mr. Klein to lower the screen for us, and I'll speak about our demonstration on the 16th.
I'm going to ask that everyone be respectful tonight. I know there's a lot of opinions, I know there's a lot of passions, everyone has the right to be here. You will have an opportunity to speak or make your comment during public session, but I will not withstand disrespect to anybody tonight.
I think, I began talking about the events of the 16th at our board meeting last week, on the 16th, so just hours past the conclusion of the demonstration, and I shared that we were having, or we'd had a very difficult day, I think that was the word that I used, difficult, and I just need to open by sharing that as I work with Mr. Brant and his team and our law enforcement partners, we've had certainly every day since the 16th, has been a difficult day as we try to even just articulate, you know, some of our thoughts and feelings and next steps, some things which are very difficult for us to articulate as we look at it. Not just as educators, our faith is shaken, but just faith is shaken in general, and as parents, we look at this, trying to understand what this all means, and of course, in those conversations, coming back to where, you know, our kids on the field there experienced something and have to articulate and make sense of some of the same things that we are. So it's been a very difficult process to try and get to the bottom of all of the different pieces of it. So I'm going to begin to share tonight, as best as I can, what we know, and as Mrs. Hughes stated, there's more certainly to come as we continue to work on it, and I'll share in here too where some of those areas are where we're continuing to work. But there are some lessons learned here, not all of them yet, but some. There are some takeaways, there are some, certainly some facts to share, and again, a lot more to come as we move forward. We, just take a moment. We always have to start these things in what is a really dry spot of policy, because policy governs how we both respond to and how we plan for all different sorts of things. So we actually have, and I believe if you looked at other districts, you would find this exact same policy, almost word for word, across districts across the state. This is Policy 5520, which governs responses to events like we saw on the 16th demonstrations and disorder in demonstration, rather. Now, this policy does what schools have had to do for a long time, which is recognize a very fine line between freedom of speech and expression and disruption in terms of how we allow, respond to, interact with student speech. And what you'll see in there is that any kind of consequence for disruption, and disruption's the key here, any kind of consequence goes back to our code of conduct, and that'll be an important part that I talk about later, as we talk about some of the discipline that arose out of our incident on the 16th. There is a code of conduct consequence for everything that we see. So whether it's cutting class, or being verbally abusive, or being physically aggressive, there are specific code of conduct consequences that come with those actions. So some background on how we work through that policy, and how we've always in this school worked through that policy, and Central has a long and I think a really brave experience of working with students who want to speak up on all sorts of issues, from any side of any spectrum that you can imagine, and also experience with where disruptions occur out of those things. But typically, these events fall in a couple of different kinds of categories. So the first kind of event that we have is when students actually have something on their mind, and they want to express themselves in a way that's organized, and they come to us, they approach us, they look for our partnership, so as to avoid the disruption that they know is a potential in what they might be approaching, because it's an issue that might be highly charged, or emotional, or otherwise have very different sides to it. So we have examples here that we've dealt with and worked with students over the years on, for many years, and they express themselves in different ways, whether it was the Day of Silence that we do every year, where students move through the day without speaking in solidarity with members of the LGBTQ+ community who suffer from harassment and bullying, they have an annual Day of Silence that many of our students mark in solidarity with those students. We had a demonstration that students wanted to mount back in 2018 after a school shooting in Florida, again, a demonstration of solidarity with the victims, and we have students out on that field that day who were there to express solidarity. We had students there to express concerns, advocating for more gun control, and we had students there expressing Second Amendment rights and advocating for gun rights, and those students came together on that field and gathered, expressed, left. Various ribbon button campaigns we do, most recently, we've had students approach us about various displays that they want to do, again, in solidarity with folks in the Ukraine as they suffer through calamity there. So we have these moments where kids come to us. In fact, our policy kind of contemplates that. Our policy contemplates that sort of cooperation, because there is, there is this civic duty that kids need to learn how to express, because many of them here are of voting age, or they're going to graduate and become voters very, very soon after graduation as they turn 18. So there is this contemplation in our policy of a partnership there. We also have demonstrations that we learn about and which we're able to diffuse, and we have a long history and successful history of that as well, where we begin to learn about something through the grapevine, and we begin to communicate with students that there is a way to do this, and there are ways not to do this. And the ways not to do it are to do it outside of working with us, outside of talking to us, and the consequences for that kind of activity are these: cutting class, disruption, et cetera, going back to our code of conduct. We've had many instances over the past where we learn of something that's bubbling up, whether it's small scale or large scale. One of the examples I have up here is an anti-masking walkout that was being advertised in the fall, and which by talking with students, we were able to diffuse and move on from as they realized that, you know, there would be consequences to doing that in an unsanctioned way. Now, occasionally, and it's not often, in fact, this may, on the 16th, have been the first that I've seen in my time here in a large way, we have an unsanctioned demonstration regardless, despite our efforts to diffuse it. So those conversations with students, those warnings, those discussions, the invitations to connect, students move forward anyway without cooperation, and those are the ones that have always been, or often been peaceful and respectful. They still might have happened, they still might have been a very small scale, students still receive consequences in those situations. So for example, if all they've done is go out and share an opinion, and there's been no further disruption, then they're cutting class at the very least. And so that's what typically happens, again, peaceful, small scale, we go to our code of conduct to root out what needs to happen there, especially when those students have been engaged in conversations with us about consequences and have failed to work with us on a more responsible implementation of their demonstration. Now, when we're faced with that kind of situation, and obviously that's what we had on the 16th, and that's obviously now how I have to speak about our response and everything that happened on the 16th, we have two main thrusts to our response plan in situations like those. The first is to secure the area that's impacted by the student demonstration, to make sure that those students aren't exposed to intruders from off-campus. So we tend to move students, if possible, to the center of campus. On the 16th, it began in the center of campus, so that was helpful, but really trying to seal the area so that we can ensure that we aren't going to have intrusion or concern or calamity from outside of campus. Second, once there, we begin to work to disperse the crowd, and we call in additional staff and law enforcement as necessary for those situations. And I'll get into the specifics of the 16th as we move forward, but here, I can share that there were two unique situations that we were facing on the 16th, that in our initial debriefings on that day and the next day, we identified very quickly. The first, and this is just a fact of how it happened, this demonstration, unlike any other that we dealt with in the past, began during passing time. So kids didn't get up and leave class to take part in this, they were already up and out and about on campus, moving from one class to another. That had two results. The first result is, is it challenged us in terms of sealing the demonstration for those first few minutes while we were still in passing time, because there were many students moving through the demonstration just as they moved from one class to the other between blocks three and four that day. The second issue that arose there was that it rose very quickly. Students who were moving through stopped. Students who maybe knew nothing about it stopped. Students who, if they had not stumbled on it, would not have been involved in it, stopped. And they joined, or they hung out around the edges to take a look. Now, we had no, is another unique quality of this incident on the 16th, we had no indication of any counter protest forming. We have never experienced that, except in peaceful terms, but participants who had gathered mistreated students who arrived to express a different point of view. So this was a two-sided protest, and it was very much full of distressing moments and aggression that I'll talk about as we move through the presentation here. Now, I'll go through a basic course of events for you, and to do that, we have to flash back a bit to well before the incident. On May 6th, we had a small group of students conducting an abortion rights rally demonstration at the courthouse in Flemington. They did this on their own, this was not a school event. After hours, they went down to the courthouse, and they had signs, and they demonstrated there on the courthouse steps out in the community. Now, the reason this is important is because soon after that, we began to go on alert for potential issues on campus. We were starting to receive rumors that there would be a demonstration on campus the following week, so that's the week before the 16th. Staff members, and again, here's our usual, and has always been successful kind of approach, staff members are dispatched to communicate with specific students who are thought to be potentially involved in these things, and to communicate, again, there's a right way to do this, there's a wrong way to do this, here are the rules, here's what we need you to respect in order to ensure the least amount of disruption. Now, we immediately began reviewing our procedures, planning a response in case something did happen, but there was no demonstration that week. No demonstration occurred on campus. Now, something begins to happen as we hit the end of the week, and it's only now in our investigation that we're uncovering the possibility that students were planning to go back out into town on the evening of Friday, the 13th, but they were rained out. So students go into the weekend, now with a failed effort from Friday night, they're coming in on Monday, potentially looking at the school then as the place where they can mount their second demonstration. So on the 13th, we start to receive indications from students that something is up. We start to hear from students that something may be planned for Monday, and it's a bit more specific information that we're receiving, it's not just vague rumors, we're hearing from students about, you know, the specific potential for a Monday demonstration on campus, and we, again, move into the same MO of reaching out to specific students, connecting with specific students to make the rules clear, and again, moving toward our procedures to prepare for any response. Now, as we get to Monday, 12:40 PM roughly, again, this is between blocks three and four, so this is during passing time, students began to gather out on the practice field by the wishing well. Now, we have, again, at that moment, a thing to do. We seal what we can on campus, we secure the area as best as we can with the students who are gathering to ensure, again, that there's no intrusion from outside of the campus that's going to interact with this moment in which students are in an unsanctioned gathering. Across campus, we're doing additional things. So our security receptionists say in the 1112 office, they're kind of far from where this incident is developing, but they're now taking on a slightly different kind of activity as they work differently with people now coming into the building. We're starting to seal entrances to campus from the roadways at this point with help from our security guards, our duty release aides, and law enforcement partners who are on campus. And so as we begin that process, we're looking toward, again, securing that space where they're gathering, and then beginning to dissipate the crowd. Raritan Township Police Department, in any given moment, we typically, well, more than typically, we have three police officers on campus. We have our student resource officer, who's a full-time member of the Raritan Township Police Department, and then we have two part-time Class III officers who are, you know, they are fully experienced and trained law enforcement officers, they're retired but have come back into the service here to work in schools, and they're here throughout the school day. So these three individuals were on the scene, and as the demonstration progressed, they called for additional assistance. So four additional officers from the Raritan Township Police Department arrived, and so these seven law enforcement officers were on site at the place of the incident and beginning to work with our staff, again, to contain and ultimately disperse this demonstration. Now, I have to speak a little bit about what this looks like on campus. Throughout all of this, we are continuing to monitor the situation to determine what does this need to do to the rest of campus, you know, and we're constantly then moving toward, are we at a point where we need to call a lockdown? Are we at a point where we don't have assets around the demonstration in order to gather in and around it? The thing to note here is that you may have 100, 200 students gathering in a particular place on campus, however, there are over 2,000 students spread out through the rest of campus who need to continue through their day, who are in their classes, who are going about their Block Four, and who need to be accounted for, and whose safety needs to be affected by everybody who's working with them, teachers, duty release aides, hall monitors, security guards, everywhere, everyone. So across our 72-acre campus, there are 22, 23, 2400 students settled into Block Four as we get this growing crowd in the practice field. In addition to the seven officers, you can see the list up there, we had 12 administrators, our supervisors and vice principals on the scene, multiple teachers were there, multiple duty release aides, operations staff members were there to make sure that the facility did not pose any danger, and that there was no danger to the facility there, multiple security guards working in the immediate vicinity of that demonstration, and just beyond the demonstration, additional staff member taking up special posts to ensure security of exits and entrances, and then everyone else on campus working with the 2,000-plus students who are in their Block Four. So the entire campus is responding, even though the entire campus is not on the scene, but certainly on the scene is a large number of folks. Now, again, I mentioned earlier, and I'll come back to this again, verbally aggressive, the demonstration became verbally aggressive toward a student with a counter protest sign, and this is where it became most distressing and where we had our most difficult moments, both during and in all of our reflections afterwards. This was terrible moment, and we talk about, we talk about, you know, this isn't us, this isn't us, but we struggle then with the realization that if this isn't us, then what happened? Why did this happen? It wouldn't have happened if this wasn't something that was in the air in how people were behaving. But we had verbal aggression, and then we had physical aggression, knocking down signs, shoving. We were able to remove students during that, during those moments. Again, all of those individuals who are responding to this incident at the scene are both surrounding it to secure it and moving through that crowd to try and keep people separate, and pulling students out who are showing levels of aggression that are beginning to force us to question, you know, the safety of students. That one student who withstood those aggressive attacks, police officers, our own Class III and also another police officer who was present, were attached near that student so that she would have that presence nearby as we continued to work to dissipate the crowd. Demonstration moved through several phases from there, and the crowd moved in different areas of the practice field, and also into the stadium stands at one point, back into the practice field until our efforts to remove those students were successful about 60 minutes after the demonstration began.
But can you show us the video? Tell us the truth.
Mrs. Hughes, I'm just going to continue on.
Excuse me, I am going to ask everyone to be respectful of Dr. Moore's presentation. There will be a time for public comment.
When do we get the truth?
Excuse me, sir. If I need to call a recess and shut down this meeting, it will be very unfortunate for this board, for the students, and everybody's here tonight. I ask you to please be respectful, you will have your moment. This is the time of the Superintendent's Report. This is a board meeting for board business. Thank you.
The board works for the public. All right, the DS, let's see the video. I was there, so let's see it.
Okay, I'm going to call for a recess. We'll come back in 10 minutes.
You're a bridge to truth.
Can I have a motion to call a recess, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion denied.
Okay, folks, we're going to try this again. Can I have a motion to return to public session?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is everybody here? Yes. Okay. I think everybody wants the information that Dr. Moore has to present tonight. I would ask that you allow Dr. Moore to complete his presentation without commentary. There will be an opportunity for public comment. If it gets to the point where things are getting out of control again and getting disrespectful, I will adjourn the meeting. I want this information out. There's important information in this presentation. I know the public has important questions to ask. All of you are welcome. We are looking forward to your comments during Residence Forum. But we have business that needs to get through, and we are in the superintendent's report. So please, I'm going to ask Dr. Moore to return to the podium to complete his report, and we will move through the rest of the agenda, and the public will have the opportunity to speak. Guys, I don't know how to say this any more clear. I'm a parent of kids in the school system, as well as being a member of the board. The behavior that we are showing our children is abhorrent. So please, let us be respectful. We can disagree, that's okay, but please be kind and respectful. Our kids are watching.
They're watching, Neil?
Dr. Moore, if you could continue with your report, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes, just waiting for the computer. Here we go. So where I was before we took our recess was talking about the full span of the event, about 60 minutes, so 12:40 until approaching 1:40, 1:45. We have buses begin to stage at around that time for dismissal. So the goal of getting this to dissipate by that point was paramount because we, at that point, needed to have that area clear in order to stage dismissal. And it was. Students began to move back inside with staff members heading up through, mostly through mid-campus at about 60 minutes after the beginning of the incident. Now, and again, want to reiterate, certainly the distressing moments, the most distressing moments of this incident were in the behavior that was shown to counter protesters who had arrived, and those involved shoving, expletive-laden verbal aggression, vandalism to signs, signs were knocked over, thrown, kicked, all of those things that made this a most distressing and disrespectful scene and example of student behavior against a student of theirs who showed up with another viewpoint. And again, as we worked through that situation, there are multiple students removed from the demonstration as it's unfolding, and our first disciplinary consequences are actually being meted out almost immediately as a result of some of those actions. So I want to talk about those consequences to date, and through this, also, you'll get a bit of a sense of the scale of the whole situation. So disciplinary consequences, and to date, indicates that we are not done, that these may continue to expand as we continue to investigate the situation. We review testimony from the kids involved, from staff members who were there. We have seen all of the videos on social media that have been shared. We have our own assets in that direction as well and are able to piece together quite a bit, but there's still work to do. So this is where we are. Seven students so far suspended for defiance, verbal aggression, and physical aggression. Seven students assigned extended detentions for obscene language and other outrageous behavior that didn't rise to the level of aggression in the same way. And currently, right now, we're investigating over 200 attendance infractions that are either tardies or cutting class potentially, and those would carry the consequence of after-school or extended detention again. All of these consequences go back to our code of conduct through that policy on demonstrations and disorder. And again, this is not complete. This is not done. I can share, interestingly, that the largest group of attendees, though not the largest group of those who received heightened consequences like suspension and extended detention for outrageous behavior, but the largest group of attendees were 10th graders. That's not entirely surprising because of where this occurred outside of the 910 building, but it also does impact how we move forward on some things next, which I'll talk about in a minute as well. So those next steps, as we look at where we head from here, and this is where a lot of our concentration is shifting as we move from the immediate aftermath and understanding and investigating and talking about consequences and supports and what happened, moving toward what do we do with this kind of demonstration, which is something unlike any other demonstration we've seen on campus before. Immediately, we began messaging with students, Mr. Brandt, Mr. Ebner, Mr. Estrada, our vice principals, making multiple announcements each day, talking about all of the celebratory things that are in front of us as we head to the end of the year, talking about all the joy that we have in being together in this spring, talking about all of the good things that we owe each other, and talking about the fact that some of those may be at risk if we continue to see behavior like we saw out on that field, students treating the way, treating each other the way that they did. We also have opportunities immediately because of our testing schedule. We have large groups of students together, so this week, we are working specifically with the 10th graders to talk to them about what went on on the field, what the appropriate ways to go about this are, and just reiterating how we treat our classmates. And so because of our testing schedule, we have that opportunity to meet specifically with the 10th graders in the coming days. We also know, and we see this clearly, that these students do not know what it means to demonstrate in this way in an appropriate manner. We have curriculum and lessons to bring to them in a longer-range plan as we move forward. Again, I have to reiterate, many of our students are of voting age, or they soon will be after they graduate. This is it, as far as their education in civic participation goes, and we're finding definitely the need to talk more about that with them, more of a need than we've seen in the past. Policy and procedure. We began debriefings with law enforcement. That's been ongoing through the past week. We had meetings even today. So findings from those conversations, very fruitful conversations with our partners in law enforcement. Going to move to our district safety team for analysis as we determine what are the planning and policy revisions that we need to make. So as we face this phenomena of this kind of demonstration, something unlike we've seen before, how do we have to account for it in our planning, in our policy, in a different way moving forward? We've had success in the past, but now we need to reflect on where we need to do better in the future. Also, drilling and exercising with our partners in law enforcement throughout the summer, the spring and the summer as we moved into next year, what do we have to practice that to make sure that roles, communications, everything are a lot clearer to everybody So a couple of ideas on some first lessons. It's very early for this conversation, but I just want you to know the kinds of things that we're sharing as we reflect on the bigger pictures on this. First is, again, though we've been successful in the past in these kinds of circumstances, we need to adjust our planning because there's a new reality to how discourse occurs. And that's a fact. That's a fact that we have to face, is that this is different from anything else we've seen in the past because the discourse is different than things that we've seen in the past. And I hate that that's true, but it's something that we have to work into our plans with how we empower students to express themselves about things that are important to them on campus. We have some teaching to do to support them in that before we can find ourselves comfortable with demonstrations again. We also know that we have to communicate much better and much more quickly with everyone, whether we're talking about staff, students, the Board of Eds, members of the Board of Eds, need more information more quickly, and parents certainly, to ensure that everybody's aware of what we're seeing and that we can enlist all the help that we can to diffuse what's potentially a distressing situation out there. Again, we have this balance to strike between authentic education in rights and responsibilities of expression, but also ensuring that we don't have a repeat of anything like what we saw on the 16th with the treatment of students that we saw there. So communication is a key part of that. In the past, we might have felt that that was raising undue alarm, but we see now again in a different reality of discourse that we have different avenues that we have to take there. Code of Conduct. We have to explore if there's potential to look at, again, that Code of Conduct is tied to our policy about disruption in demonstration. Does our Code of Conduct need to, need to, need to consider things that happen during a demonstration like that as a different kind of offense? Currently, that's not how our Code of Conduct, or really any school Code of Conduct reads, but is that something that we have to explore in order to ensure that we don't have any more instances like that? Especially as we see a higher potential for those kinds of things to arise during events like these, given the nature of discourse today. A couple of additional thoughts, and then I'll conclude with my thanks to the board for their attention through this. I want to come back again to this point. This difficult point for us as educators, this one that shakes our faith as educators most, most aggressively, is that we do have a call and a need to prepare our students to engage in discourse. That's part of our job. It's part of our job. It's a big part of our job. And we're facing challenges in that today that we have to now account for in our planning in a much different way than we've ever had to before. We have to work with our K8s differently. We have to talk differently about what that trajectory looks like for students to learn how to become active citizens. We have to understand what they see in the adult world and how, how we count on them to be the most respectful that they can be in this kind of discourse. I also need to thank our officers of the Raritan Township Police Department. You know, our three folks who are on staff, our two Class Threes and our full-time SRO, and the four additional officers who joined us that afternoon, the officers who drive by our campus to check on things. They join us at our board meetings when we need them. They're always here for us. They're always expert. They always know how to help us in these situations. And that was no different on the 16th anymore than today or any other day that we count on them, especially in these, in these really difficult times. So we're blessed to have that partnership with our, with our law enforcement friends at Raritan Township, and wouldn't be able to do much of anything here without, without that partnership. So with that, Mrs. Hughes, I conclude my report again with thanks for everyone's patience, but also with the, well, with the weight of what the commitment is here in terms of ensuring that we can help our students understand, and as a school, we can walk that very fine line of respecting their rights to expression, empowering them to be the kinds of adults that we're all hoping that they be as they contribute to society as they grow, but also that they do that in a way that's respectful, in a way that recognizes that there is difference of opinion, but value in everyone, and that there is right for everyone to be there and to express what is, what is a truth of their own. So that's a commitment that we move to now as we move forward and as our approach to these kinds of incidences evolves in what is a really trying climb right now for those kinds of events. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So before we move on to the first Residence Forum, I need a motion to approve HIBs 49 through 52.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our first Residence Forum. This is the time for public comment on, for items on the agenda. Only items that are going to be voted on tonight for action on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our organizational items. Can I have a motion for G1 through G15? I'm not gonna go through them all again because they were discussed at length last week at a workshop meeting, but just briefly, re-adopting the Booster Club, school year calendar revision for this year, the approval of next year's school year calendar, approval of the 2022-23 officials, 2223 professional service providers, health benefit advisor, council, sorry, continuing disclosure agent, New Jersey state contract vendors, cooperative purchasing services, petty cash accounts, district depositories, checking account signatures, 2022-23 budget implementation, joint transportation agreements, and establishing a bid threshold. Again, all these items were discussed at length at the workshop meeting last week. Can I have a motion, please?
I move items G1 through G15.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion about those items? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg? Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. Move on to committee reports. Mr. Richard, do we have an update from Student Life and Programs?
Nothing new to update from the last meeting where items on this agenda were presented and discussed. And with that, I'd like to move items 1 through 5 on the Student Life Committee.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion about the items in Student Life and Programs? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg? Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nickel, do we have an update from Operations and Transportation?
There's no additional items to report since last week. All items as shown in the agenda. With that, I'd like to move items I1 through I14, please.
Call second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussions on O and T? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Bloodfield, do we have an update on Personnel?
There are no additional updates from last week, so I will move Personnel items J1 through J9.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion of items under Personnel? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell? Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Donnell, do we have an update from the Racism, Equity, and Diversity Committee?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Any additional board business to discuss at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our second Residence Forum. There's a lot of folks in the room. I'd like to just get a sense of who intends to speak. If you could just raise your hand. Okay. Maybe 9. Okay, so... Just trying to determine from a, from an efficiency standpoint. I think what we'll do is we will modify our speaking time from 5 to 3 minutes to allow everybody to speak. If we stay at 5, it only gets our 6 people in. Is that okay with the board? And if there are additional people to speak beyond that, we can extend our time since there was nobody at the first Residence Forum. Is that all right? So let's see where we're at in the first 30 minutes. Okay, so if anybody'd like to speak, you'll have 3 minutes to speak. We'll have a timer go off at 2 minutes, and then you'll have your final minute to wrap up. When you come up to the mic, please state your name for the record. Write it down on the piece of paper, which I hope is there. And again, I will reiterate, please be kind and respectful in your comments.
Good evening. Kevin Ostrander, East Amwell Township. Hope you don't mind I'm a little taller. I like to take the mic out. Listen, I come to you tonight, I'm not, I'm not here to sing your praises, I have to admit, not tonight, after what I saw unfold last week on this campus. Just so you know, my background, I'm actually a public official in New Jersey, former. I know what it's like to sit up there and be accountable to the public. I'm a veteran. I know what it's like to be accountable to a country. I'm a father of a former student. I know what it's like to be accountable to a family. And I also have been a taxpayer in this town, in this district for 20 years. So I think I have a right to speak here tonight. Dr. Moore, I do appreciate your presentation. I don't necessarily agree with the content, but it was actually nice to see something in writing this evening to work from. So thank you, at least for pulling that together. Where do I start on this? What happened last week was absolutely despicable to me. I saw the videos. There's lots of videos out there, and that's the unfortunate side of social media today. What happened was deplorable. It was almost a riot, what I saw. I kind of categorize it in two areas that really annoy me. One being just an egregious breach of policy at the school. I realize it's tough to contain 2,500 students, but when I look at the profanities, not only verbally, but in written format, the verbiage that was used was just unacceptable behavior, absolutely disgusting. I mean, it would make a sailor blush, okay? Secondarily, you're right, it was an unsanctioned event. So having a grouping that large, about 200 students assembling, can only lead to one thing, something bad. At least it wasn't bigger than that. It could have been a lot worse. Fortunately, most kids stayed in class. And the fact it was disruptive because it did happen during class period, so that's also very unfortunate. And I think you've already talked about it, basically the bullying for the counter protester, one or two that were there. I would suggest to you, moving forward, that's gonna happen oftentimes. If someone's there to speak about something, there is gonna be somebody that has a counter opinion. So what that leads me to is I, again, seeing the video, not being there, I see an administration that didn't seem to be in complete control of that situation. So Mr. Moore, Mr. Brandt, there's a lot of video footage of you walking around but not taking the action necessarily written down in those slides tonight. I'm not saying it didn't happen, as you've said, but it didn't look like it happened to me, which I think was a bit unfortunate. So I think there's a, there's improvement here for, I think, leadership moving forward. And I think that's something that was lacking that day. I do appreciate, again, some of the actions that we're taking, that you mapped out there that may not have been visible in the video. But again, moving forward, I think there's a lot to be learned. And I'm interested in watching and following the metrics moving forward. I mean, a suspension rate of 3.5% seems a little low, but I realize it's also early in your investigation. It's only been a week. So we'll be watching that to see what happens moving forward. And just lastly, I hear a lot of terms that are overused here, and one that I'm gonna use tonight on you is reimagine. I'm reimagining what it might look like here with a change in the administration at some point in time. Because I'm really, really disappointed with what happened here. So I hope, I hope, I hope you listen to the commentary tonight. I'm really looking for those next steps and where we go as a school and a community. Because I think there's a liability here on the hands for the staff, the students, and also the taxpayers if this is allowed to continue to go on. I don't think it's a lesson in civics. I disagree with that. But I understand what you're saying, and let's, let's see where we can go moving forward. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Frank Lintenny. I'm from Raritan Township. 18 months ago, I addressed this board about the danger of keeping Jeff Moore as your superintendent. And I think we've finally gotten here now. He's been dividing this community since he arrived. And what did we hear tonight? We didn't hear, first of all, you have to understand as a board, for all of us who have watched that video over and over again and had our kids endangered, it's an insult having the accused come up and give the opening argument in what we thought we were coming to. It's an insult to let him speak while there's an investigation going on. Because any investigation that doesn't end up with him either resigning or being fired by this board is a faulty investigation. This happened because of one person. Jeff Moore caused that riot. He has curated the other protests. Interestingly, the mask protest didn't happen. So the guy who monitors everyone's social media, and we're told that extensively, his investigations and his contacts with law enforcement, somehow, when this was five 16-year-old girls, couldn't contain it. Wasn't contained because he didn't want to contain it. You heard a whole bunch of lies in the presentation. This campus was not secure. And if we need to, we'll get the police to testify to that. It was not secure. Anyone could have come on here, on this campus. Anyone could have left. As Mr. Ostrander said, we saw the, the administration standing around with their hands in their pockets. No one was trying to stop it. And if they had, when it was five kids, a minute before class was supposed to start, as the school policy dictates, said, "Hey, get the class right now, or you're being written up", we wouldn't be here tonight. But he didn't do that because he wanted the demonstrate, the demonstration to happen because he's a shameless self-promoter. So there is no excuse for what happened. He caused it to happen, and he dragged a lot of other good people, like Mr. Spencer and Mr. Brandt, into it with instructions not to do anything. So they all had to, to fight back, I'm sure, which was a natural impulse to not watch a 15-year-old girl get physically abused. So every parent, I've already heard there are several who are suing. Should, I encourage, I knew it would happen. He's gone into inquisition mode now, and he's gonna make the kids pay. I hope every kid who gets suspended or gets detention sues as well because it's a civil rights violation. There's no immunity for that. There was no discipline handed out.
Mr. Ostrander, you have 1 minute.
I heard the tone. Thank you. So add those seconds back on. There is no immunity for civil rights violations. And since the curated demonstrations had no discipline before, there shouldn't be any discipline for this. So if your kid was suspended, got detention, doesn't matter what side of the issue you're on, what your feeling the Supreme Court decision is, one guy endangered all of our children. No one. This board, and certainly not any parents, gave him the leeway to have our kids out rioting. And kids are gonna have their college careers affected, their, their permanent records affected, their jobs possibly affected, because one guy wanted it to happen to promote himself.
Thank you, Mr. Lintenny. Your time's up.
And again, any, any solution that doesn't... Doesn't put him losing his job is not a solution.
So anyone else who'd like to speak?
I hope this doesn't fall off. All right. Lisa Santangelo from Reddington Township. So what I would like to do is just piece together the rest of the policy that Mr. Moore failed to show in his presentation. So same policy number, 5520, Disorder and Demonstration. And it reads, "The board will not permit the conduct on school premises of any willful activity engaged in by an individual acting alone or by a group of individuals that interferes with the orderly operation of the educational program or offends the rights of others." with the orderly operation of the educational program, or offends the rights of others. The board specifically prohibits any assembly or expression that materially disrupts instruction, is obscene, slanderous, or grossly prejudicial, advocates the use of dangerous or harmful materials, advocates the use of force, or the violation of law or school rules, or advertises goods or services for unauthorized commercial gain. Disorderly pupils will be disciplined in accordance with law and board policy. Staff members who assist pupils in disorderly conduct may be subject to disciplinary measures." So that's the rest of the policy that was omitted from the presentation. So I guess when I think about the presentation and the attention strictly on the students, my question is, where's the disciplinary consequence for the administration, specifically Mr. Moore and Mr. Brant? Where is that? No one's talking about that. They allowed it, they knew about it in advance, we all have copies of the social media, when it was, the time it was, and where's the heads up to the parents? None of the parents got a heads up from the school about that. Where was the communication to the parents? So that, at least, you know, parents are dropping their kids off, thinking these kids are going to sit in school and learn a lesson. They didn't know these kids were running around and being chased by hundreds of kids out of their minds, screaming and ranting and raving. So where's the opportunity to tell the parents, "Hey, maybe I'll keep my kid home. My kid doesn't have to be subjected to seeing this, hearing about this, or being disrupted." I wonder about the, just the mental state of these kids, to get to that level of absolute rage? Where does that come from? We don't see that at home, but we saw it in the school. It's interesting, isn't it? And then when you talk about, like, pondering lessons to learn, preparing students to engage in discourse, what does that mean? What does authentic education mean? Now we're going to start talking about what? Community organizing and curriculum and lessons? I don't think so. I really don't. I think you guys need to... What I would like to see is the termination of Dr. Moore and Mr. Brant. Because the things that we did not see in this presentation is what we saw in the video, which is them walking around, a kid grabs a megaphone out of Dr. Brant's hands, there's absolutely no respect for the "leadership," quote unquote, in this school, because there's a lack of leadership and a lack of judgment. So what would you expect these kids to behave like, under that?
Thank you, Ms. Santangelo, your time's up.
Hi, Tiffany Jarrett, in Flemington. I'm here tonight because I'm going to advocate for all the teachers in this school and the students who can't speak up in fear of some kind of consequence, possibly, to their position in employment. Also, for the students, as we've seen what happened to the one student on all these videos, it's no wonder why all students at this school do not feel equal. We saw it, right? We have evidence. Regardless of what you want to say, I've been coming, I just started coming here to these meetings since maybe September, October. Every time I come and I look into policies, I follow what you say, time after time, I dig, and I find more mistruths, I guess you want to say, or actually, not following policy, and trying to create your own. As to go off of what Ms. Santangelo said, I do not send my child to go to public school to become a political activist. I don't want them participating in political theater, or anyone's social experiment, for their own political agenda, or their political leanings, or whatever their ideologies are, that many parents might not agree with. We don't need this, this is indoctrination. It's nothing else. Nothing else. I will not... Look, my daughter's about to graduate, so this better not come back on her, we'll have problems. We will have problems. But she's my third one to go through this school. And I moved here to bring my kids, to have them go to this school in 2015. 2017, we had all the suicides, the epidemic going on at the school. I spoke about this time and time again, I come up here, and we wonder why there's stress, we wonder why there's mental health. I am trying to be an advocate, I tried to work with Mr. Brant, I questioned policy, he doesn't get back to me now. How convenient. So am I being discriminated against? Let's not push parents out. We are our kids' advocates, and we are the parents, not the school. It happens with us, you do work for us. I will not accept what is going on here any further. I didn't even read what I had intended, but, parents, look this up for yourselves, go read Policy 5512, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Go, please, advocate for your child, look at their pupil rights, 5700. There's also PPR, that's the People Protection Rights Amendment. Your children, just make sure they're not violated, get involved, know policy, and come to these meetings, so you can learn what really happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jim Vargas, I'm a longtime resident of Flemington. Both my children attended this school, but they're in their 30s now, and so they weren't affected by what happened yesterday. I was educated in a time of the Cold War, Vietnam, and those type of things, and in college, we protested. And I had my friends in a frat on one side of it, and some of us on the other. And then we said, "How stupid could you be to think like that?" Went and played flag football, and had a beer. The ability to shout somebody down is rampant in our country today, and much of it comes from the educational environment. It is something that is not, I don't know if it's important or tactfully okay, but the fact that educational areas ought to be open areas, where you can express yourself, your feelings, and talk. So to talk about teaching people how to discourse, that's fine, as long as it's fair. The other thing that's happening now today is, we need to be teaching students that maybe things are law, but there are ramifications of the law. I was born, this protest was over life, I was born before Roe v. Wade, and most of you were too. You must tell people that today, one pregnancy in three is terminated in New Jersey. That means that one person out of three at this board would not exist if you were born where abortion was life. Now, you can keep it legal, but you can't hide the ramifications of it. Today, we're facing two major things in the educational environment. One, the sexual standards, which are way off the board about teaching sixth graders or fifth graders about anal intercourse. That's not an educator's job, that's a parent's job. The other side of the equation is the law that talks about gender equality. We should teach gender equality, we should teach people should be taken care of. But Family Alliance put together a lot of research on Lesson Plan. One Lesson Plan says, "You need to treat everybody equally, one plus one equals two, and we're all good." The other one had, the point of this Lesson Plan is to attack male toxicity and promote gender fluidity. These are the type of things that shouldn't be in a normal curriculum. And everything along the line, whether it is the no need for a young woman to say her parents are notified on abortion, or the fact that a kid can come to school, tell what gender they are, you have to extend it, and you don't even contact the parent, where a kid could be coming and leaving his house, changing his clothes in the locker, going and be calling something else, and then come back, it's just unreal. You must involve the parents in your education, and they must be involved in yours. Thank you for your time.
My name is Alexis Stangada, Raritan Township. I'm here today to add on and share my personal experience with the administration at Hunter and Central. I know the big topic today is about the protests that occurred last week. A lot of talk had been going on about how the administration didn't handle the situation well from before the protest began, to the riot it ended up being. I don't condone any of the behavior that went on, it was all very wrong. Each and every student has their right to share their views in a safe way. Students and administration acted poorly without concern for each other's well-being. While my story is more personal, I'm going to share what I'm going through with the administration right now, to add on and show the lack of support to the students. Two months ago, I was stiber harassed by another student at Hunter and Central. Several posts were made on Snapchat, and sent by friends with concern for my safety. Police were involved, and my family chose not to press charges, because we felt the school would keep me safe. I have to say, at this point, the administration was very quick in taking action to deal with the immediate offense. Fast forward about a month, this situation has continued to escalate, again, but not through social media, and rather right here in school. I don't feel safe at school at all. During school hours, I'm continuing to be stalked, verbally harassed, bullied, and possibly even video recorded. I've reported every incident to the school, and shockingly, they've done absolutely nothing about this. I'm now sacrificing my education, because the administration has not done anything to stop the issue. There were three incidents in a matter of one week, clearly showing that there's nothing serious being done to stop this cruel behavior. May I add, every single incident, I have not responded to the clear harassment, and just kept going on with my day, after reporting to my vice principal. I have to leave my classes early, and I've missed multiple days of school, because frankly, I don't feel safe in the school. It's incredibly hurtful and degrading that I don't have support from my administrators, and that they're not doing anything to make the harassment and bullying come to an end. In addition, there's constant disrespect from the administration towards the students, which definitely riles up the students, and probably makes them more susceptible to taking situations completely out of hand, like what happened at the protest. I have to say, being I'm a freshman, I expected a supportive environment that we as students could trust and feel safe in. Instead, every day, I wonder, what's going to happen today? As one administrator said to me, "If it's not about beating up Alexa, then who cares?" To say I'm disappointed is an understatement. Our school administration needs to start finding ways to make this high school turn from a chaotic mess to a safe and respectful academic facility, so the students can achieve their highest ability. Is it going to take for me to be assaulted before any action is taken? The riot that occurred, that was meant to be a peaceful protest last week, is the accumulation of anger, frustration, lack of support, lack of discipline, and a lot of emotion. Nobody deserves to be treated the way Nicole was treated that day, but no one deserves to be treated the way that I've been treated the last two and a half months. The point of the matter is, there should be equitable discipline for everyone's poor actions. Each situation deserves full and equitable treatment towards the students involved, and Hunter and Central lacks that equity towards the students.
Good evening. Tough act to follow on that one. My name is Nicole Gallo, I live in Lebanon Township. My kids do not go to the school district. I'm going to read something that I wrote. I can honestly say, if this woman was just here talking, and she was an LGBT student, everybody would be all over this, for bullying, harassment, and intimidation. The reverse discrimination in these school districts is disgusting. It's got to stop. Students are suffering. I'm going to read what I wrote. "I'm here to share my concern about the state of affairs of Hunter and Central High School, and about the leadership. First, let me state what took place here last week. Students were rioting for the right to kill. Children were rioting for the right to kill other children." Please let that sink in. "As I'm here to support the three brave women who risked everything to stand up for life and truth, I'm also here to speak for the well-being of all the children in this district. Superintendent Moore, under your leadership and full knowledge of the protest, you have shown you're incapable of your leadership in this school. You have shown that your solidarity to political activism has taken precedence over the well-being of the students. You have overstepped your authority, violated parental rights by not being transparent, put every student physically in danger, administrators, faculty members, custodians, groundskeepers in danger, all of them. You violated your own school policy. Your leadership has failed, and you should be held accountable. These extreme controversial issues have no place in this school, they should be discussed at home, under supervision of parents and guardians. Today, youth have been jaded, they've been indoctrinated, they've been groomed, and obviously, they've been taught hate, violence, and intolerance, which is the exact opposite of inclusion and diversity. Our youth are under attack by progressive left, which has obviously failed. Our youth have reached the highest levels of depression, anxiety, suicide, and since parental rights have been diminished, the responsibility resides on all of you. Congratulations. U.S. education rankings are fallen behind the rest of the world. Why? Because substantial curriculums have superseded academics, focusing on social bias biases, gender fluidity, sexual identity, puberty blockers, dead names, and much more. Board and administrators are in the business to diminish parental rights and awareness under the guise of inclusion and social emotional learning. I have seen the viral videos, which included violence, people supporting the violence, foul language, gestures, but what stood out the most was a young woman ripping a megaphone out of the principal's hand, and then turning it around and screaming in his face. I stand to support every teacher, administrator, and board member who would like to get back to true education. The ones that dedicate to bring their students out of the dark and into the light. The ones that lift them up and tell them the truth. The ones who gently guide with parental involvement. The ones who will bring our students up, and not teach them that they are victims or oppressors."
Ms. Gallo, your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, Maria Prendibano, East Hamwell. I sympathize with that young lady, my daughter was bullied as well. And I have a question for the board. How many times does a student have to make a terroristic threat against the population of the school before he's expelled? Based on my experience, I'm just wondering. Putting that aside, the events that happened here disappointed me deeply. I heard about this from my daughter. I did not get an email telling me what happened that day, I heard about it from my daughter and social media. Nothing was sent home. That's despicable. If you know that there's an issue that these kids are getting very heated on, why don't you empower them and educate them, and teach them about the issue? Show them a video of an abortion happening. Tell them what happened. Show them. You can put all this other crap in help curriculum, but you can't put that.
Hello. Sandy Ostrander, East Hamwell. Like others here tonight, I'm here to express my outrage about what happened last Monday at the school. at the school. It is very clear to me, and I'm sure to many other parents that are here as well, that the policies, the educational priorities, and this administration do not keep our children safe. And they're only working to tear down our children and divide our children and our community. I'd like to speak to the policy. A lot of people are speaking to other aspects, but I'd like to bring it back to the policy again. District Policy 5520, Disorder and Demonstration. The first sentence in this policy reads, "The Board of Education," that's not Mr. Dr. Moore, it's the Board of Education, "is responsible for providing a thorough and efficient system of education for pupils in this district and is authorized to preserve order so the system may function properly." This did not occur when the protest turned mob and was allowed to continue for nearly 90 minutes. Did anyone in the school administration contact anyone here on the board where you Pupils, the policy continues, and this is pupils will not be disturbed in the exercise of their constitutionally guaranteed right to assemble peaceably and to express ideas and opinions privately or publicly, provided that their activities do not infringe on the rights of others and do not interfere with the operation of educational programs." Well, that did not happen on two levels. The children who did not attend the rally were in their classrooms trying to receive instruction, they were studying, some of them were taking tests, and they were disturbed because of all the commotion that was going on outside. And then there were those who joined the protest and chose to engage, and they had differing opinions, and there was just no tolerance shown to them. I have to jump ahead a little bit, so I'm sorry if this is disjointed, but I only have three minutes. But the last part of the policy states, "The superintendent shall establish procedures for the prompt resolution of any disorder that occurs on school premises." Do you consider nearly 90 minutes for a protest prompt or resolution? And I ask all of you that as board members, is that prompt? And finally, the policy ends. The building principal shall be responsible for the identification and resolution of disorders in any school building and will summon law enforcement if necessary. Why can Dr. Moore and Dr. Brandt, police officers, and other staff be seen in countless videos, standing with their hands in their pockets, or walking by students filled with rage and out of control, yet doing nothing?
Thank you, Mrs. Ostrander. Your time's up. So we are at our 30-minute limit. How many other folks plan on speaking tonight, just so we have a sense? One, two, three, four? Okay. So if it's all right with the rest of the board, we'll take the 30 minutes from the first public session and add it on to this second session.
We are all outraged, disgusted-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you just say your name for the record?
So sorry. Sarah Stangada, Raritan Township.
Thank you.
We are all outraged, disgusted, and quite frankly embarrassed by what happened last week here on the campus of Hunter and Central. But I think what we should be concerned, if not more concerned, about why it happened. Why did the students feel like they could cut class without any repercussions? Why did they feel they could push each other? Why did they feel like they could freely call each other profane names despite the teachers, DRAs, police, and members of administration walking among them? Why did they feel they could break out in a unified chant of F this B while they were shoulder to shoulder with their principal, their superintendent, and their vice principals? Why did the students have no fear? That is the real question. And the answer to that question is rooted in the new climate that has emerged at Hunter and Central over the past few years, and it's time for the board to wake up and realize what is happening in our school. Five years ago, if a student submitted an assignment late, they lost credit. If a student submitted nothing, they got what they earned, a zero. Now, late policies are forgiving at best and nonexistent in many cases. Teachers are instructed not to impose late penalties, are told that plagiarism, even repetitive plagiarism, is a teachable moment, and are required to have grade floor of 60% for unsubmitted work. No more zeros. For the sake of the teachable moments and giving students a voice, Hunter and Central now avoids punitive consequences, accountability, and standards at all costs. The kids know the game, and some do as little as possible without real repercussions. The teachers are required to make concessions and recovery plans and send countless emails and give endless chances, and we wonder why teachers are leaving the profession and Hunter and Central in numbers. We have become a school more concerned about keeping students comfortable, catering to their every need, and keeping parents quiet, more than we are committed to enforcing boundaries and raising responsible students and humans who understand there are consequences to their actions. Hunter and Central needs to stop letting students run the show. Once it was advertised all over social media that the students planned to walk out, the admin surely knew it was happening, during class time no less. Why are we allowing kids to leave class? Why not be proactive and make an announcement that a student not present in Block Four would be in violation of the attendance policy and would be cutting class and therefore getting detention? Sure, they have a right to free speech, but they also have a responsibility to be in class, and Hunter and Central needs to enforce that. So why did this happen last week if all students have little to no accountability for their actions doesn't follow that they would have no fear of consequence when they cut class, push people, or shout profanities? The board needs to wake up. We have an ethical responsibility to prepare our students for the real world. You can't do 0% of your job and get 60% of a paycheck. Life doesn't work like that, and schools shouldn't either. In the real world- Am I losing my time? In the real world, can you assault someone, yell profane things, or walk out on your job without consequences? No. Until the leaders in this school enforce real consequences for behavior that they decide are unacceptable, because whether it is submitting work on time, cutting class, or behaving poorly, it will continue. While we all share the outrage and discuss looking at those videos of the students from last week, given the climate at Hunter and Central, we shouldn't be at all surprised.
Thank you, Ms. Stangada.
And that needs to change. That-
Thank you.
Rob DeVore, Raritan Township. I've lived in this community all my life. My family's been here. My family has all gone to school through Hunter and Central, Flemington High School. Never in my wildest dreams would I imagine myself being at a board meeting for the reasons I'm here. I've been coming here for about a year and a half now to these board meetings and been nothing but lied to by this gentleman here. And it's pretty disgusting that my daughter can't even go to the bathroom here. So... I was here the day of the event on May 16th. I saw it all with Mr. Bagano. And the fact that his family has not been contacted by this board or administration is more disgusting. And any of you who don't oppose this man, you're one of them. This is the greatest example of American Marxism, and it's sad that it's in this community. I saw everybody at the riot protest, whatever you want to call it, because that presentation was farce, believe me. He walked around, just walking around with a smirk on his face. You were just walking around. Edner was just walking around doing nothing, trying to come over to me to explain what was going on. When the policeman asked me to walk away, I did with Mr. Bagano, but then they came over and tried to explain that they were trying to get things under control, which never happened. So it's pretty sad, and I just request your resignation, all of you. And if you don't oppose him, you're one of them, like I said. Please. Am I up already?
No, you're just beginning.
Thank you. If I may, before I begin though, you asked for civility, respect, and I think everybody here is giving that now. It would be great if you let people finish speaking because this is a very important issue that I think deserves the time. That's just my opinion.
I'm happy to. I've been going beyond the one minute after the two-minute warning, just so you know. Could you please state your name for the record?
I will.
Thank you.
Christopher Stidoulis, Clinton Township. Board of Education members, superintendent, principal, vice principals, teacher, and all other staff. When I got word and watched several videos of the incident that took place here on the grounds of Huntington Central High School involving a very large group of pro-choice students and a small group, if that, of pro-life students, I was disgusted but not surprised. When, over the past so many years, children have been seeing adults protesting across America, whether it be for BLM, LGBT, abortion, gun control, or the environment, many of those peaceful protests turned uncivil and violent, with looting, destroying businesses, arson, assaulting citizens, and police officers at random, taking over streets, police stations, and attempting to even take over courthouses, all under the guise of social justice. It has been my opinion for a while now that schools need to remove all political and social issues from within their walls because it is divisive, it is dangerous, and we should get back to educating, not indoctrinating, children. We are not here to create the next generation of social justice warriors. I recall in 2018, a group of students raised a proposal here to hold an anti-gun protest, also known as the Walkout. And I believe it did take place. Would you allow a pro-Second Amendment rally? Would you allow a Blue Lives Matter rally? What about a pro-life rally? I don't think so, because it doesn't align with your ideology. When you put your ideology and your agenda ahead of the right for everybody to express themselves, this is what happens. It becomes biased double standard. But as I said earlier to many parents here, I don't agree with any political or social issues in this school, so I'm not advocating for that. I don't think you should continue trying to, in my opinion, train students to become better protesters and protest civilly, because we're not here for protesting. I mean, we had COVID, we had lockdowns, we had virtual learning, we have learning loss, we have mental health issues that are increasing, which I think a lot of these things are contributing as well as what you're teaching in the schools to children. And we already stood very poorly in the education world, and we spent, I think, the most per capita on students, per student, in the world. We're not doing too well. You're focusing on the wrong things. I blame the adults who fostered this type of culture. Adults in the school and others in the media, elected officials, elites in Hollywood. Their words and actions matter. Children are impressionable and learned from adults. Yes, protesting is a constitutional right. In my opinion, I don't feel you should be protesting on school grounds. Our school is in session. Just because it's right doesn't mean you have a right or you should do that. That's your policy that you allow, and I think that should be looked at and maybe modified and changed or done away with completely. But let me end with this. I'm concerned about the future of this country. We see how divided we became, especially under President Obama, further under President Trump, and we're still divided. We could agree to disagree, and we should be able to, but we have to teach the children. But we're creating a monster that you're not going to be able to control. Defunding the police, supporting criminals, allowing criminals on the street, everyone gets a trophy? This is not the generation that I grew up in, and you're all pretty much my age. I don't know what's going on here. You know, I used to be a liberal, from New York City. I'm nothing right now. I don't consider myself conservative or liberal. I'm an American, and I believe in civil discourse, and I don't believe that we should encourage students to protest. Express yourself in other ways, but not with the protest. It's very dangerous.
Thank you. Sorry, that is not allowed under the rules, but thank you.
Eric Peterson, I'm a member of the state legislature. I represent the northern part of Hunteren County. I'm here today in solidarity with the parents.
Mr. Peterson, I would ask that you please address the board.
Sure. I'm here today in solidarity with the parents. Who contacted me regarding what went on in the school here, where a young woman was assaulted. She's the victim, not the counter protester. She was assaulted. It's on video. And the problem, from my perspective, is the leadership. These kids didn't learn this on their own, and they learned it here. And it starts with this board and the superintendent. And I knew when I first came in here, I was open to hearing what you had to say, Mr. Superintendent, but what I saw was a program that was disrespectful to everybody in this room and to this board, to everybody, and to the victim. Because you told a tale that we have video that shows something totally different. The only person that I saw in the video trying to protect that young girl was some boy who got overwhelmed. The problem is, if you can't face the truth, if you can't stand up for the truth, you can't protect these kids. If you whitewash this, the kids will get the message. And that message is that nothing will happen. That they can get away with this. It starts here. It starts with the truth. It starts with you telling the truth. That this demonstration wasn't a demonstration, it was organized, you knew about it, you did nothing, and the only reason that you're now talking about it is because it went terribly wrong. I'm here because I believe in parental rights. There are kids. They're not the schools, they're not the teachers, and they're not yours, Mr. Moore. You're not here to indoctrinate them, you're not here to run your cultural revolution, you're here to teach them math, science, English, history. That's what they're here for. That's what these parents send their kids here for. They don't send them here to become, what was the word you used? To have... Sorry, I'm getting old. To engage in discourse. You're teaching them to protest in a violent manner. Respect. My kids in the schools where my kids go, over in Franklin Township in North, they talk about respect, dignity, diversity, right? Those are all the words that we learned today. How about a little respect for Nicole Bagano? How about a little dignity for her? How about a little dignity for life? How about a little diversity of opinion, a little diversity of ideas, and respect for those ideas? That's what you should be teaching.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
All right, Wayne Fish, East Anwell Township. Mrs. Hughes, I'm going to start with you. First off, you told us just before to look in front of the mirror and how we're acting. You, up there, should do the same. Because what goes on here every other week or every month, all we do is come to you with issues, and we never hear the board's side of it in addressing our issues specifically. When is that going to change? Seriously, and this is not the first time I've talked to the board about this. So today, you know, Dr. Moore gets up here and gives his false presentation. Where is anyone from the board? Where was your... You had a week to get your stuff in order, as well as being nice with the word "stuff." You had a whole week to prepare for this. So as he's going through his presentation, how about having some questions for him? Man, all these other board meetings, man, we get up here, and a teacher comes up here, and a teacher gives this presentation. When the presentation's over, guess what happens? I've seen you ask questions, I've seen you ask questions, you? You guys ask questions away! Where were our questions tonight? Seriously? Calm down! What's the phrase? Video doesn't lie?
He does.
So where are the questions in front of us, so we can hear you guys? To see, man, are you guys here for us, the parents and our kids? Or are you guys just, oh, okay, Dr. Moore's a mistake, let's pat you on the back, and we'll try to work on this for the next time? We're up to here with it. We're fed up. And as of right now, I'm sorry, after your actions, Dr. Moore, sitting around with your hands in your pocket in a sense, on the video and just doing nothing? You should be fired immediately. And if you're not fired, walk out. Seriously. When are you going to own up to this? This is all on you, this is your mistake, and the board needs to do something about it. And we should have some questions answered, meeting after meeting after meeting. We need change at this school. So, Mrs. Hughes, if you're not going to start with change, someone else better step up and start with change. We need you guys and the board to start performing. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fish. We are approaching our second half hour, so if there's anyone else who'd like to speak after this individual, there'll be time for one more, and then at nine o'clock, we're going to wrap up.
Hi, Anthony Kazie. I'm a parent here in Flemington. I've sent three children through this school. In the past, I've got to say, when there have been events on campus, you've been very quick to send a notice out, letting the parents and the children know what's happening on campus and the ramifications for what will happen to students if they participate in this event or if something goes on in the school. But unfortunately, on Monday, a violent and dangerous protest that by the school's own note, you acknowledged you had warning as early as May 6th on. You had information from the students in the halls, and yet you did nothing. Not a note to the parents, not a note on the statement of the penalties of not being in class to the students, and according to your own note, the priority was in closing off the school rather than shutting down and protecting the kids from what should have been obvious as either a socially charged argument at best or a potentially dangerous event at worst. At a minimum, you had students breaking school policy, and yet it took 90 minutes for the staff to correct this policy violation. And these students, at the end, were simply let back into class. Rumors abound after this event of teachers escorting their students to the rally, questions as to where these large signs were created, being told that in some cases it was in classrooms, and worse. And unfortunately, this kind of suspicion grows when the board and the school fails to act. It's natural to ask the question, does the school's lack of action to stop a dangerous situation belay an underlying advocacy for a particular side to the argument? For all this talk about respect that I've heard, what I've heard this evening is for you to respect the students, all the students, to respect the parents' rights to teach their own kids moral values, and respect the parents by at least allowing them to decide whether to send their children in. At bare minimum, you knew this event was going to happen, and you let it happen, and that's on you. Thank you.
Philip Rizzo, Harding Township. As I've traveled and I've been to different board meetings around the state, I've realized very quickly, everybody has a line. Everybody may draw the line in a different spot, but everybody does have a line. For me personally, when my children, who are now late teens, to youngest is 14, but when my oldest was in grade school, my line was drawn at that point when I heard about some things that were being taught in their school, and this is going back 15 years ago. That's where I drew my line, and I pulled my kids out of public education and I put them into parochial school. Everybody has a line, and when it comes to drawing a line in the sand, our nation was founded when people said enough of the government overreach, enough. There was a preacher, his name was Peter Mullenberg, and he was a pastor of a church, and he was preaching, and he was talking about standing up to the government while his brother was in Massachusetts, and he kept telling his brother, listen, you're a pastor, you need to stop doing this, you need to stop talking about the government, you need to just pastor your church. And then the brother in Massachusetts, his church got burned down, and he reached out to his brother and said, hey, we need to oppose the government. Everybody has a line, and it's become very evident tonight that in this district, and I've been all over the place, it's become very apparent tonight that the line has been drawn by these parents. And I'm so glad to see it. I think a very clear message has been sent that the line is now drawn, and they are going to demand action. They are either going to get it, or the famous saying that just came about, elections have consequences. And three years ago, we saw this trend coming, and we started a school board initiative to replace people that do not act when called upon to act. And I wonder why any of you would sit on this board and run for election and come out week after week and month after month for a three-year term to do nothing. The time is for action. The time for action is now, and you are going to take it, or, I don't know which three of you are up, you are going to come across three very passionate parents, and your career is over from sitting up on this dais. I'm glad to see it. I stand with these parents, and I stand with anybody who has drawn a line in the sand when government has come over the line to impact, touch, and harm our children. I think you've all been put on notice tonight, and I'd recommend you guide yourselves accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Okay, with that, we're going to close the second residence forum, move on to board comments. I just have one comment in response to Mr. Fish. I make every effort to respond to every question that is emailed, presented at the board. I keep diligent notes, I keep the rest of the board informed, and if there's anybody who feels like a question hasn't been answered under my watch, please reach out to me with those questions, I'll be sure to have them answered. Is there any other board member who has any comments? Yeah, Ms. O'Donnell.
Thank you. So first, I'll say thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming out, and thank you for showing your solidarity. I would ask that you at least continue to send your concerns to me, if not to the entire board. I like to hear them. I like to hear what the parents and children are experiencing at this school, it gives me a different perspective. As I said last week, one of the things that I did not see a lot of after the events of last Monday was what did the administration do? As a board member, my concern is looking at the numbers of the presentation tonight, and when I see 200 children, took an hour to control and get back into class, I'd be very concerned about the other 2,000-plus and what they might do if they joined them. So that leads me to really ask, what are we doing with the next steps? What is the administration learning? Are we reaching out to other schools that have been down this path and figuring out what has worked and what doesn't work? I don't hear that a lot in the presentation, and as has been asked, I'm asking on behalf of all the students and all the parents to see some information on that, also to see what is the school's perspective. I've seen a lot of the towns and the students' videos, but I haven't seen Central's videos. And at least as a board member, I'd like to see that, see what our perspective is and how we analyzed it. So I'd look forward to seeing that in the future.
Ms. O'Donnell, did you have comments?
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, my time here on the board has been really valuable to me, to learn about the process of being a board member.
Not getting your microphone.
Mr. Klein, can you...
Hello? Somebody hand your microphone? How's that? Okay. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that, you know, my time here on the board has been very valuable so far. There's definitely a learning curve. Sitting on the other side of this table, I would have many questions about process and procedure, and now that I'm sitting here and I know the way meetings work and how they're conducted, it's different. But I think really the most important thing to me is respect, and we want to know why this happened to school? Well, we can look at ourselves. We can see how we talk to people, how we accuse people, how we behave adversarially. We're in this together. It's not us versus you guys, like, we're an extended community, so I think that has value. I think Dr. Moore has been above and beyond a good leader for this community.
(laughter)
Well, I'm speaking, and this is what I'm talking about. So we need to model for our students what's okay and how to act, and I would ask that of you also. Thank you.
Anyone else on the board have comments? Dr. Moore, is there anything you'd like to add? No? Okay. Okay, with that, we're going to head into executive session to discuss... Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Charny.
I have a comment regarding some of the concerns that the public expressed about what we teach. I've been an educator for over 50 years. I've worked in over a dozen districts. What we teach is mandated by the state. We have no choice in the matter.
(inaudible).
No, we do not have a choice in the matter. You have a choice to address your state legislators about what you feel should be in the schools. These are state mandates that we must teach and that we will teach.
So were you saying you disagree with it, but you're just teaching it because you have to? I'd like to know that answer. What about the mask mandate? It was harmful.
Folks, this is a time for board comment. Public comment has closed, so Dr. Charny should have the right to speak, as you guys did.
I've said what I need to say, and we will follow state mandates. Again, if you feel that those mandates are incorrect, you have every right to petition your state legislator in countering that mandate. I would encourage you to do that if your feelings are that intense on those issues. We will continue to teach the state mandate, and that's our obligation. Not only it's an obligation, it's a mandate, and the meaning of that is that we have to implement it.
Thank you, Dr. Charny. Any other board comments? Okay, with that, we're going to conclude public session, move into executive session for matters of school security for about an hour with no action to be taken upon our return. Thank you.